This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the City of Warrenville Community Development Committee of the Whole, regular meeting on Monday, January 8th, 2024. Clerk or Deputy City Clerk Gravetti, could I please have a roll call?
Mayor Bromel.
Here.
Alderman Lockett.
Here.
Alderman Ashauer.
Here.
Alderman Berry.
Here.
Alderman Davalos.
Here.
Alderman Augustinovich.
Here.
Alderman Wilkie.
Here.
Alderman Widener.
Here.
Alderman Kruckenberg.
Here.
You have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Will everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now is the time that we set aside for citizens' comments. I don't think we have anyone signed up this evening, so we'll go ahead with officials and staff members' comments, beginning with Mayor Bromel. Happy New Year, Mayor.
Thank you, same to you and everyone out there. The more I run into citizens post-holiday, the more kudos I hear for the decorations this year. So Public Works, please pass this along to all the people that did such a great job. Everyone says best ever. I guess you just can't do any better than that. So congratulations, well done. That's all I have.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll go on to the business of the meeting, and tonight's first item is a discussion item, and you will see on the dais that there's a revision or an update as far as our discussion goes, that at the conclusion of the information that's being presented, we'll be asked to form a consensus on what direction and what ideas we have for this item moving forward. So I'd like to, this is discussing the 18th District Code Enforcement, and we have with us this evening Chief Code Enforcement Official Michelle Lilly, who will tell us all about this item. Welcome.
Thank you, and good evening. Staff would like to have a, sorry. Staff felt that it was time to bring this topic to the council to discuss the ongoing efforts and what efforts we would like to employ going forward. So staff currently puts in a lot of effort on code enforcement cases. The city code allows us to take them to the 18th District, but that hasn't been employed here for quite some time, if ever, and we'd like to revisit that because we have some lingering code cases that we haven't been able to get resolution on. Listed those out, some examples in the memo there presented to you. Our concern is that the lingering cases are causing the neighbors to have long-term suffering, essentially, having to view that ongoing code violations and issues on their property. We feel that the 18th District will give resolution. It may still be some time before that resolution happens, but the 18th District then sort of takes it out of our hands and puts it in the hands of the court, and they will get resolution, one way or another. We don't intend to bring any cases as a first, that would be the first part of enforcement, we would bring cases only to the 18th District that we've exhausted all other efforts, multiple attempts to contact them, multiple opportunities for them to voluntarily comply. We do estimate that after the initial kind of backlog of cases have made their way through, that this would only be one, maybe two exceptional cases a year, if that. We're hopeful for less, we're always hopeful for voluntary compliance. And again, this would only be used in the most extreme non-compliance situations. I think that's all I have to highlight. You have the memo in front of you. If you have any questions for us, I do have John Kumpak, who's our Code Enforcement Officer for Warrenville. If you have questions for me, or Amy, or John.
Great, thank you, and I appreciate your code enforcement approaches. It's not an easy task, and from what I've seen and what I understand of it, is Warrenville generally has a step-by-step approach that strives for voluntary compliance at the onset, and then as corrective action is warranted, things will kind of follow a stair-step method and get a little stricter as non-compliance takes place. Is that kind of your view of how enforcement proceedings occur or happen?
That's correct. John takes great effort in reaching out, trying to make direct contact, whether it's in-person, phone calls, or written correspondence, he makes effort to make that initial contact. He's responsive when they do reach back out to him, and we give them all kinds of leeway and extensions if they're making efforts to comply. We keep working with them to help them, I mean, we just want compliance, that's the ultimate goal. It's not a money-making thing, so we're not seeking fines, we don't care about the financial aspect of it, per se. We just want compliance. But if compliance isn't gained, we do have the option to impose fines. We found the fines to not be effective, and they, we don't have a collection process in place here, so some of the fines are longstanding and haven't been collected. So obviously, the effectiveness of those is diluted somewhat. That's probably not helping our situation, but the efforts that John goes through to try to gain compliance are just really exceptional. He puts a lot of effort into that and communicates very well with people. I feel like he gives them the best opportunity for understanding the city's position. We just want compliance. Whatever we can do to help you get compliance, we'll do. But sometimes, that's not enough.
And there were some interesting examples that were cited in John's, Mr. Kumpak's, report about just the impact on neighbors and people who live across the street from situations that have been kind of lingering for a long period of time, you know, vehicles in disrepair, windows out, sheds, you know, not falling down on their own, but being in terrible condition that, you know, affects property values, and then also certainly affects the neighborhood too, and people's, you know, atmosphere, their own environment in their neighborhood.
And to another perspective on it, it also, it's an attractive nuisance that encourages others to do the same. It encourages that level of property maintenance at the neighbor's property, or, you know, two blocks over, they see that, they drive by it for whatever, you know, they're exposed to it somehow, and then they start neglecting their property. It's hard to enforce that when you haven't enforced the other property.
Good. All right, are there questions or concerns from the council, beginning with Alderman Davalos?
Yes, I just wanted, in the summary, there was a line that just sort of piqued my interest. It's toward the bottom, and it reads, "The notification process for the 18th District will also provide even more opportunities for the property owner to correct said violations prior to the case being heard in court." So are these some kinds of opportunities that we can't provide, or other choices they may have to resolve the issues? Do you have any details on that?
It's going to basically be a repeat of what we do. In my history with code enforcement, the attorney will give notice, they'll serve notice to the property owner, or the tenant, or whomever, and multiple people, maybe they'll serve notice to. So they then have that opportunity. So the attorney basically will take the case and repeat the efforts of code enforcement, give them formal notice after seven days or 10 days, or whatever the timeframe is. If they haven't complied, then they'll get the formal, basically, notice to appear in court that it's elevated. So they'll have another opportunity yet to correct the violation before they actually have to appear in court.
Okay, thanks.
That's what that means.
Thank you, that does explain it, thanks.
I just have two quick questions. One, can you give us an estimate on what the backlog is at this point, and then could you kind of estimate the number of hours it would take for the city lawyer to go ahead and get through those cases?
So I might defer, I think we have, we counted six or seven that we felt like were to the level we would want to maybe pursue taking them to the 18th District. There's another six or seven or so that are lingering, but we felt like we could maybe make some progress on those still. But I think there's six or seven that we were ready for the 18th District. And then estimating the hours for the attorney, I don't, that might be a question for Brooke, but each case would probably be unique, depending on how hard it was to find the property owner, how, because they have to take different steps than we take to do that. So all of those things will be a variable that I can't predict. I would say a minimum might be eight to 10 hours by the time they would serve the notice. It would be two notices, I believe, and then appear in court at least once, if not twice. It might be six to eight hours at a minimum, I'm not sure.
Thank you.
Alderman Lockett?
Just a couple of quick questions. First off, thanks for all the example, it was really good to see that, and the one thing they all have in common is they're all over two years. Two years of chasing, calling, emailing. I think that is more than enough time for somebody to rectify whatever it may be that they're working with, or at least reach out to try to see if they can get somebody else to help them. With regards to the 18th District, to your knowledge, we've never, we have the right to go there, right? Correct? We've always had that right, it's just that we've never proceeded far enough with that?
We found some historical documents that previous code officials may have been taking cases to the 18th District years ago, five, six, seven years ago, but in recent history, it has not been pursued, and we couldn't find a full case that had been there. So we were a little bit questioning, and Ron had previously relayed to us that it hadn't been used, it had not been used before. So we're not real sure. We're both obviously relatively new to the city of Warrenville, and we don't know. But we thought it was worth a discussion, because it does have potential for some negative feedback. It also has potential for some positive results and get compliance for the neighbors and the neighborhoods, but there is that potential that, of the negative feedback from, you know, the strong arm of the government and those things, but...
Right, but let me ask you this, so how do you guys find out about most of these violations?
Most of them are complaint-based.
Right, so it's not like we're driving around, trying to find things, trying to, you know, big, strong-arm government, like you say, just write stuff, create work. Majority are all coming from neighbors who have to look at it.
Yes.
And for these neighbors and citizens who have been looking at stuff for over two years, this might be the jolt that's needed to maybe resolve some of these, but I think also, in my opinion, to kind of let others know that might be on the fence here dangling a little bit, that they're not going to get away with it for two years, because they'll all talk, right, oh, yeah, that doesn't mean anything, doesn't mean anything. So to me, I think it's the right thing to do, to move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe the mayor has a comment, and then we'll ask the treasurer for his comments. Alderman Ashauer?
Okay, thank you. Thanks for bringing this forward, I think it's a really good idea, just to highlight the frustration of the neighbors, the people who see these violations and they don't see them correct for a long period of time, and they don't understand that there's a process that has to be followed. And then when the people that are under the gun to do something keep putting it off and putting it off and making it worse, the appearance is that the city is helpless to take care of things. The other thing I would emphasize is that code enforcement is to a minimum level. We're not asking people to do the Cadillac level, we're asking them to do the used Chevy level, just to make it safe, and make it, the appearance relatively nice. So our standard is just trying to get things to look halfway decent and be safe and healthy for people. So people should understand that we're not trying to bankrupt anybody, we're trying to enforce a relatively minimum standard, and people are resisting that to the point where it's costing the city a lot of extra effort and money, and a lot of frustration for the neighborhood. So I think the sooner that we can get these long-term ones cleaned up, the better. It'll set an example that when the city needs to act on something, when somebody calls in a complaint, there's going to be a process that's efficacious, that works, and doesn't drag on for years. So to me, this seems like an excellent idea, and I really appreciate the fact that you brought it forward, and that you're trying to improve the system. As you mentioned earlier, you're relatively new, you've come here with good ideas to help us do a better job, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Alderman Ashauer?
Thanks for all the information. I guess my question is, does this follow our normal path of litigation where it comes to the council in executive session, there's a clear explanation of cost-benefit, what the potential legal costs would be, and other ramifications that we should be considering, or has this just become a tool of the Community Development Department? I would shy away from the latter. I think it should be something that the council should be very aware of, and have complete understanding of what we're asking to have done.
Director Hamri, do you have a response?
Sure. So the code doesn't dictate that there has to be a council process for each of these, but it definitely provides that allowance. What we would anticipate with these cases that have been lingering out there for so long, is that we would go to closed session, this would be a legal matter, a case matter, for the council to become aware of the details of. We would not be bringing these matters to you in open session for review, we wouldn't want to put the council in a position of defuncto, de facto adjudicating the cases, that's not a role for this, it's, but you're right, you know, if we're talking about a major case that would involve major expense, we would use the processes that we have to get council's review and approval of that. But there might be some cases where, it's hard to imagine everyone out there where, you know, we've gone through a few of these, and it's become pretty reasonable in terms of the attorney's time, she knows what to expect, and it's not a major expense, the ordinance doesn't require the visit to council, but obviously, we're here now talking with you about even using the tool. I think you can assume you will take that conservative approach of going forward to making sure that you're comfortable with the cases that involve substantial legal expense.
Thank you. Treasurer, did you have a comment?
Quick question, is the 18th District DuPage County, or is it something else?
I believe it is DuPage County.
I don't believe there's any other questions or comments, so by raising hands, if we could come to a consensus direction on this, to authorize the use of existing city code provisions which grant city staff the authority to take code violations, matters to the 18th District, if you agree with this consensus, please raise your hand. Okay, I think we have consensus and direction on that item. Again, to the code enforcement folks, thank you very much for all you do. I know it's a difficult task, but we certainly appreciate your efforts in especially striving for voluntary compliance, and kind of moving through the necessary steps, and any way that you foresee that we could support you in your efforts by, you know, talking about this issue and helping the residents understand that we're not taking a new step to come after them, that this is, you know, something that we're trying to elevate and improve the appearance of the city, and take care of matters that have, as the mayor said, have been lingering out there, and being kind of in a blighted condition or in eyesore for a long period of time, and it's, you know, necessary that we move on some of these issues. So again, thank you. Our next item is consideration of an engineering contract to update the city water system model, and Public Works Director Phil Kukler will present this item. Welcome, Phil.
Thank you, good evening. The city's water system was last modeled in 2016 in anticipation of the development that was going to occur in Tiff Number Four, developments like the Everton subdivision and Lexington Trace, and we want to determine what, try to evaluate what the impact of those developments would be on the city's water system. The results inform the city's purchase of two properties in Tiff Four for the construction of a water, new water tower and well number 13. With the completion of those developments, and some others in Canteran throughout the city, staff prepared a decision package, included in this year's budget, to update the water model for this year. The $77,000 proposal included with the agenda backup materials, is EI's effort, represents EI's efforts to update the water model, but also to include some modeling of scenarios for potential future developments, and looking at the city's water system for any, for improvements that might be able to be made in the system itself. So with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Questions from the council? I have one, does this contract cover kind of the status of the aquifer, and how the recharge of our overall water well is performing, or does it start somewhere else?
It does not. I know a couple of years ago, the Illinois State Water Survey had looked at our aquifer and said it was in good shape. We monitor the water levels at each well site, each city well site regularly, and they're pretty consistent. So based on our observations and the Illinois State Water Survey conclusions from a couple of years ago, I think it's in pretty good shape right now.
Okay, thanks. If, Alderman Ashauer, you have a question?
I do, I'm just looking at the contracts for $77,000, you're asking to change it to $30,000 for this year and $50,000 for next year? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, I, as part of, yeah, I just rounded up to $80,000 in the budget. I don't know exactly how much we'll spend before April 30th, and how much we'll spend after that.
Well, I guess my question is, do we have a contract for the $30,000, and then we're going to have a new contract for the following year, or not?
No, this is one contract for the $77,000 that'll straddle two fiscal years.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Lockett?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the city council pass a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Engineering Enterprises, Inc. for the water distribution system model update.
Second.
Thank you. See no further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Director Kukler. The next item is consideration of an engineering contract for sanitary sewer flow monitoring and evaluation, and again, Public Works Director Phil Kukler will present this item.
Thank you. The current budget includes about $41,000 for, to update the city's, analyze the city's sanitary sewer capacity and the flows that it's sending to Naperville. Staff also plan to include $91,000 in next year's budget for flow monitoring to evaluate the progress of our sanitary sewer maintenance program and its efforts to reduce INI, or inflow and infiltration in the sanitary sewer system. There are two contracts that are included with the agenda backup materials for this item. They total approximately $121,000, which is about $10,000 less than we had anticipated for the scope of work. The first one is for flow monitoring in the basins where the sanitary sewer maintenance work had occurred already, and to reduce INI, we're going to try to estimate how much we've reduced INI in those basins by the efforts that staff has undertaken, as well as the contractors we've hired. And then the second, second contract is for flow monitoring downstream of several recent developments, such as Everton, Lexington Trace, Stafford Place, the two large apartment buildings, Westland and Arden, to see if the actual flows coming out of those developments match what was calculated during the design and permitting process. And then staff will work with EI to evaluate the results of those flow monitoring, excuse me, the flow monitoring, and then sit down with Naperville to talk about what the available capacity and the conveyance and treatment capacity in Naperville are for Warrenville. That's going to be important for the city to understand as we move forward with possible redevelopment in Canteran, we need to know what, where we stand with Naperville in terms of how much flow we can send down to them. And with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions from the council? Alderman Lockett?
So we, this is how we find out about the INI, right, and all everything that we've been doing with the lining and the flow, and this is how we can set a base point, more or less, right, for us to track it for future with everything that's happening?
Correct. Yeah, this is, and there's a, a few years ago, former city administrator Coakley had asked me to insert a couple of years and stretch out the program a little bit to provide a couple of checkpoints. This is the first one of those checkpoints, and I forget, the next one might be in about four or five years again, where we're going to evaluate the construction that was done, and see how, what impact we've had on INI. It's a little bit difficult to tell, because no, two years are the same in terms of rainfall, and INI is really the result of rain and groundwater, so even if you have the same amount of rainfall, how often did it rain, how is that spread out throughout the year? That differs from year to year, so this should give us an ability to estimate that.
Alderman Lockett?
With that, I'd like to make a motion, the city council passed resolutions approving professional services agreement with Engineering Enterprises, Inc. for sanitary sewer system rehabilitation, progress, flow monitoring, and sanitary sewer system flow monitoring of new developments.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Alderman Wilkie. There's no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Item number four is consideration of the high-speed garage door contract, and Public Works Director Phil Kukler will present this item.
Thank you. City Council approved a decision package as part of the fiscal year '23 budget to replace the main entry and exit garage doors at Public Works with high-speed garage doors. Staff obtained three quotes ranging from about $87,000 to $100,000, all of which were less than the $140,000 that was included in the current fiscal year's budget. Staff will also need to hire an electrician to perform about $5,000 with the work to prepare for the garage door installation, and we're recommending waiving bidding, because although staff obtained three quotes for this work, it exceeds $25,000, and that obtaining those three quotes is not the same as a formal bidding process. With that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Anyone with any questions or comments? Seeing none, Alderman Lockett?
I'd like to make a motion, city council passed a resolution waiving bidding and approving a contract with Ritek Corporation for the purchase and installation of high-speed garage doors at the Public Works Department.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Alderman Kruckenberg. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, motion carries, and we're on to the next item, consideration of an enterprise fleet leasing option. And again, Public Works Director Kukler will present this item.
Thank you, this is the last one for me. Public Works and Police Department staff began talking with Enterprise last year in about March to talk about the different fleet leasing options, or it'd be for the city with Enterprise. Enterprise has several municipal partners at this point, and staff has talked with two of those municipal partners at Glendale Heights and Burr Ridge, and received very positive feedback from their experiences with Enterprise and their fleet leasing. The proposed first 10 years of the program includes transitioning from the city owning 36 vehicles to leasing those vehicles, and that'll occur over the first five years, and then those 36 vehicles will be fully leased, and will enter into like kind of a regular, pretty consistent cost in the year six through 10. The vehicles that are included are all the city hall vehicles, which are three here at city hall, all of the police department fleets, and then the smaller portion of the Public Works fleets, so not the large dump trucks and that, the smaller pickup trucks and portion of the fleet. The staff evaluated the costs of the first 10 years of the program pretty conservatively. We looked at it with assuming no improvement in fuel savings, or no fuel savings costs, and then no save, or minimal savings in maintenance costs as well. We do believe that there's going to be more significant savings in both of those than were, that were included in our evaluation, but we tried to be conservative about this to really look at it. The result of that evaluation was the lease program- to really look at it. The result of that evaluation was, the lease program was estimated to cost about $448,000 a year on average during the 10 years, and then versus the $442,000 a year for the city's planned replacement of the vehicles in the CMRP and EMRP. Staff is requesting direction from council to work with the city attorney and Enterprise to finalize an agreement that would begin on May 20, or May 1st of 2024, so the beginning of fiscal year '25. The finalized contract will be placed on a future city council agenda for, consent agenda for approval. Jamie from Enterprise is here with me to answer any questions you might have on the program.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Davlos?
Yeah, when you, when you looked at the difference between what we're doing now and this leasing program, I'm assuming we took into consideration what we would make from selling the vehicles, like what we do when we're done with them, right? We auction them or send them to the auction people or whatever?
Correct. The, we get very little, I mean, we do get money from either on trade-ins or auctioning, but yes, it was included.
And, and so that was all put into the calculation of how, how much money we save?
Correct.
Thanks.
Alderman Crockenberg?
Is there staff time figured into the savings as well?
It wasn't figured directly into the cost savings, but.
Or less staff?
Yeah, there, we didn't, we didn't, that's not factored in dollar-wise, but Capital Maintenance Superintendent Clark and Deputy Chief Dawson both spent a lot of time coordinating the purchase and outfitting the vehicles. And that's, I mean, when you factor in the their hourly costs to the city, that gets eaten up pretty quickly to, for the $6,000 a year difference, I'm sure we're saving more than that in their time.
Thank you.
Alderman Lockett?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. So for this cost that we're talking about, that's just for the first year, correct? Or will that, or is that, I mean, or is that for 10 years?
Yeah, so this was, this was the average, average per year for 10 years.
That's what I meant. I knew we weren't spending half a million on cars.
Right.
So we, we're going to sign a 10-year contract. Are we able to cancel that contract at any, at any time if it doesn't seem like it's working?
Yeah, Jamie's going to come up to the podium and.
Please introduce yourself by name and title when you get to the podium.
Hi, I'm Jamie Warsinski. I'm a council executive with Enterprise Fleet Management. So to address your question, you're not locked into a set number of years through our partnership. Really, the agreements that we're looking to get approved is just to begin a partnership with us. In those agreements, there's no language that'll say you're signing up to work with Enterprise for a set amount of years, or that you're required to replace a certain number of vehicles with us. Through our program, we're confident that we're going to show our value to you over a year, and you're going to want to continue to work with us. There's really nothing legally obligating you to continue to do business with us.
Okay, great. And then we, they talked about in the memo about hybrid vehicles and your ability to potentially get those a lot easier than what we can due to your buying power, I'm assuming. Have you seen kind of the same kind of troubles with, as far as getting them?
Yeah, so the benefit with Enterprise, obviously, we buy and sell more vehicles than anyone. So we're very close communication with the manufacturers. We have a network of dealer partners. So we're able to advise our clients on which vehicles you should order, when. Example of that with the challenges in the auto industry and the microchip shortage. We knew ahead of time that unfortunately, a lot of the hybrids were going to be canceled. So we kind of steered our clients away from those, having that information. But that's the type of consultation that we'll bring to you all. And as hybrids and EVs are becoming more, more and more existent in industry, we're able to advise on that, point you in the right direction to get you the vehicles through the right channel at the best price, and then run them the appropriate amount of time to be the most cost-effective.
Okay, great. Tesla trucks all around, you know?
Exactly. Yeah, that's, that was part of the deal.
I knew it. The other question I had was with regards to the police vehicles, because if we're going to get the vehicles from you, then they need to go get outfitted. So is that something you handle? Or is that something that public, our Public Works is still going to handle?
Yeah, so we, we would coordinate all the outfit of the vehicles. So we would coordinate the logistics of getting the vehicle either from the manufacturer or dealer partner, getting it taken to the outfit vendor. And then once that outfit is complete, either you guys pick it up from there, we can deliver it to you. And then your first lease payment on the vehicle doesn't start until after it's delivered. So you have a road-ready vehicle, already outfit, licensed, titled, registered. You wouldn't see any payments until after you already have it in your possession.
And that's the same thing when we go to traded-in, right? It's basically just taking it all off, then you get the new one, put it all back on?
Yeah, we, we have a team that, they specialize in aftermarket equipment. So they'll be able to advise if there's equipment that is transferable to the replacement vehicle, if there's a cost savings there, obviously. So we, we have all that coordination behind the scenes that we'll be doing on your behalf.
Okay. And then I guess, so with the pricing that we have here, does that include all the upfitting for all the, so that's inclusive of everything then?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, I believe the mayor has a couple of comments.
In terms of maintenance, who's responsible for maintenance on the vehicles?
Yeah, so we have a maintenance program where we're actually able to fix the cost of your monthly maintenance. The maintenance would still be done through local vendors, but with an enterprise agreement, you get enterprise negotiated rates. And then with all the data that we've collected over managing millions of vehicles year over year, we anticipate how much it's going to cost to maintain that specific vehicle over the mileage pattern and the term that we have determined is the most cost-effective. So then each month, your preventative and non-preventative maintenance is at that fixed cost. So you won't experience a variable maintenance expense on those new vehicles acquired through Enterprise.
So we're responsible to find vendors to do the maintenance then? Is that, did I understand that correctly?
I'm sorry.
You provide a fixed amount for the maintenance and we find a vendor to accomplish the maintenance?
So we have a, we have a list of approved vendors. So like all the Firestone, Pep Boys, and I believe I've sent a link to Phil and Jamie of all the approved vendors in the area. But it'd really be the same maintenance facilities that you're going to today. It would just be through the enterprise program and the enterprise rates.
So we're not currently doing maintenance in our own garage on our vehicles?
That's correct. The, when the former mechanic retired, who made trouble hiring a new mechanic, we've started outsourcing all the maintenance.
Okay. In terms of the, how often vehicles are replaced, how does that work?
Yeah, so our, our leasing structure, it's completely different than a closed-end dealer lease. It's an open-ended equity lease. So we do have a lot of flexibility there. Now, we'll run all types of analysis to determine what is going to be the optimal holding period for that vehicle. But you have flexibility there. So for example, and it's not one-size-fits-all. So like our recommendation for a squad vehicle is going to be different than a half-ton Public Works truck. But we'll provide you with all that information and say, hey, this is the ideal time to replace this vehicle. And with the flexibility with the term, sometimes things change in the market. The resale market gets very strong, or maybe not as strong. You have the option to either replace that vehicle sooner if it makes financial sense, run it a little bit longer if it makes sense. We're going to bring you all that data year over year and just help point you in the right direction, and then put a plan together that, that we'll execute on your behalf.
So there is a cost involved for us in replacing a vehicle. In other words, you don't just keep providing vehicles year after year. We have to pay for an upgrade when it becomes necessary.
So, so really, like our, our cost of business, I guess we could call it, is there's a management fee associated with each lease payment. And that covers your, your enterprise team, our network, all the resources available to you. And that's just built into your monthly lease payment. So that's really the payment towards Enterprise.
Okay, still not quite understanding. When a vehicle needs to be replaced, what is the cost involved for the city? Say a pickup truck. Now, it's, it's determined by your metrics that this thing is at the end of its useful life. So you recommend replacement. And what, what part of the cost do we bear for the replacement of that vehicle when it needs to be replaced?
Oh, I, okay, I'm sorry. I didn't understand it first. So with the open-ended lease structure, we would be writing the vehicles to a residual value, conservative residual value. So we're going to sell the vehicles on your behalf. And we're going to sell the vehicle for more than it's worth. So there's actually no cost to you. You're actually going to be getting equity back for that vehicle. For example, you know, we'll sell a, maybe there's a $5,000 residual value on this truck for Public Works. We sell it for 15. The $10,000 of equity goes back to the city in, in the form of equity. And a lot of our customers will use that as a down payment towards the replacement vehicle, which is going to just build sustainability with the program and, and lower your monthly payments on the next vehicle.
Okay, so overall umbrella-wise, what are the significant benefits to the city for going with your program?
Yeah, absolutely. So I've, I've heard you guys talk a lot about image. It's obviously something very important to you all in a beautiful city, by the way, driving through. And so through our conversations, you know, we've been able to show that with our program, we can actually cut the holding period for the vehicles more than in half. And it's actually going to save the village money. So you're going to have newer, safer vehicles. We're able to acquire more vehicles with the same amount of capital, so being responsible with the, with the budget year over year, and just running the fleet more effectively. Great for, for image, safety, all those things that I've mentioned.
And how long have you been running this program?
Like me personally?
No, Enterprise.
Enterprise actually started as a leasing company. A lot of people don't know that. In 1957, our, our owner, founder, Jack Taylor, started out of a Cadillac dealership as Enterprise Leasing. So Enterprise Fleet Leasing has been around since then. And we've really just been becoming more and more prevalent in the municipal space over the last five to 10 years. I'd, I'd say we've, we've grown to about 80 or 90 municipalities in Illinois, thousands across the nation.
Okay, so you have significant experience in doing what you're selling to us?
Yes, absolutely.
Successful experience?
Yes.
That's the big good.
Yes, 100%.
Okay, well, I like the idea that we get better vehicles for the people that are doing our work for us. I'm always in favor of having the best tools possible to get the best work out of peoples. And in terms of safety and the ability to do the job, that's a good thing. So I, this looks like a good thing. We don't have a mechanic anymore, so it's nice to know that that's going to be taken care of. And it's nice to have someone who is very, very experienced in exactly what we're doing here.
Yeah.
Do it for us and frees our staff up to do more substantive things that benefit the community. So I think this is a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your information. Director Kukler, do you have any conclusion?
No, I mean, Jamie Clark and I worked hard with Jamie from Enterprise to, to go through. So we had a lot of questions early on. I went back and forth several times about I thought it made sense or not. It seemed like it was too good to be true initially. So I, we, Jamie worked hard with us over the last several months to provide us the information we needed to make a good evaluation to form our recommendation.
Okay. One last thing from the mayor.
If we do go forward with this, we may have to do something with this Jamie thing because this will be the third Jamie. Jamie one, Jamie two, and Jamie three or something because it's going to get confusing.
It's easy to remember, at least.
All right. Thank you for your assistance tonight and working so hard to develop this program with our staff.
Thank you all for your time and consideration. Appreciate it.
Alderman Lockett?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that city council direct staff and the city attorney to negotiate a contract with Enterprise to lease part of the city's fleet.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Alderman Wilkie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next item is an informational item, an update on the OTRS number two project, which is also referred to as the Farmer Sitco site. So Senior Civil Engineer Christine Hocking will present the information on this item.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, everyone. So I have some good news with this project. Obviously, it's been going on for such a long time. We finalized all of the soil boring and analysis. The consultant, Terricon, put together reports, submitted it to the IPA. And regarding the lust-related contamination, which is the petroleum-based contamination, no further engineered barriers or construction related to that type of contamination needs to be, needs to occur on the site. We had originally assumed and estimated for this year's budget that we would have to do some type of construction, removing the soil related to petroleum-based products onsite. And that is not the case. So that's good, related to the budget for that. When, this is the case because when the tanks were taken out, there were also piping taken out where the pumps were. And so with the piping and the tanks, some soil was taken out of those areas. This was back when everything was getting demoed and the tanks were being taken out. And so that work that was done at that time seemed to be, and was analyzed to be enough to complete the type of lust requirements needed in terms of removal of contaminants, so related to petroleum. However, for our NFR, we still need to, you know, check a couple more boxes for that. Included in my memo, I listed a couple of them that we've already talked about in the past. Highway authority agreement includes if there's any contamination within the right-of-way, which were currently, part of it's DUDOT's right-of-way, part of it's Warrenville's right-of-way. So this would be related to the DUDOT right-of-way, that, that would be under the city's control. And we would have to pay for anything that DUDOT would have to send away in terms of contaminated soil. If they were to do any type of reconstruction, I know that Public Works is currently in the talks with DUDOT about taking over that portion of Warrenville Road from the bridge to Batavia Road. So that may become a moot point with DUDOT. However, we would still have to have an agreement, just a standard memo with the IPA for that. The other one is an ordinance prohibiting groundwater potable uses. I brought this up at a committee meeting a few months ago. We finally have IPA comments back on that. And that will be presented at a city council meeting maybe next week. I forget exactly. And then just other minor things like construction worker notifications, if there are any construction activities in the future, and just notification of adjacent owners that there's NFR. It's very standard. Same thing happened over at the old, the, where Stafford Place is currently. Also, we have to submit a completion action report to the IPA for lust-related activities. So we don't have actual construction work, but we do have some closed-out activities that we have to do for that portion of the IPA lust program. The other program that we're, that is occurring on this project is the site remediation project program, which is the non-lust or non-petroleum-based contamination that's in the ground. That's all of the heavy metals, the iron that we've talked about many times in the past. There still is that type of contamination in, on the property. And the construction activities and what we call engineered barriers will make that site and make that residential-type quality so that in the future, it can be developed into what we have seen as what the city and has been presented in the past for that, for the OTRS site. There's also other documentation very similar to the lust site that's required for that, that we're working through. It's very, like I said, it's very similar, if not the exact same. We'll also need a report for that. So since we have all of this information to the IPA, they've given us approval on what action items need to be done now. Construction-related action items for the SRP and other more standard filing of various things for the lust program. We can move forward with the actual construction activities on the site. I provided two of the final engineering plans. One's more of a layout, pavement layout, and the other one's a utility plan, straight from the plan set. We plan to go out for bid this month, hoping for next week. And we'll have the bid period open for about three weeks to try to get the best contractors on board for this. We'll have a bid, pre-bid meeting because it is a unique project. It's not just a, let's put a parking lot in. It has environmental type of constraints, and the contractors need to know that before they bid on the project. So we anticipate the construction would occur in March, April, May, June, finishing up by June. At that point, the environmental consultant will create a completion report to send to the IPA, which documents that we've done all the necessary steps in order to obtain our NFR. NFR is the No Further Remediation Letter. We do need to have that in place before September 30th of this year in order to use that RLF revolving loan fund, funding that we were approved for a few years back. So all the SRP-related costs are eligible for a loan payment. So we've done that in the past for some of the reports. We will do that for all the construction costs related to the SRP-related contamination. I did note in our, my memo that because of the uniqueness of this project and where it's located on Warrenville Road and Batavia Road, Public Works next year, because we do have some grant funding to, for Batavia Road, that's going to be a project for next year. Obviously, we're bordering it with this project. It makes sense to do a few minor right-of-way type of improvements, including making the sidewalk along Warrenville Road wider. type of improvements, including making the sidewalk along Warrenville Road wider, as well as rerouting the utilities to the Votel area. Right now, they cut through the north side of the old Citgo gas station site, which, if you think about that, in the future, there'll potentially be a building there, so we want to reroute this. While we're doing all of this work in here, we're going to reroute that, and it makes sense for, from the road program standpoint, to do all the water and sanitary work ahead of time, so we're going to incorporate, we're incorporating that into this project as well. So the project that eventually you'll see the contract for will be the remediation on-site and some off-site right-of-way, or adjacent right-of-way work. With all this, we've been speaking with the Votels, and we're finalizing, our attorneys, working with their attorney, and finalizing an agreement to obviously do this type of work, because it, some of it does occur on their property. We will be doing also a land exchange with them to properly align the property line that will straddle essentially the driveway entrance, just adjacent to their building, to continue to provide appropriate access, appropriate parking for them on one side, and the city parking on the other side, and in turn, with that agreement, is other property improvements, including removing sheds, aligning, removing sheds at various points throughout the agreement. As, as noted in the timeline, we have a very detailed description about when everything will take place. We anticipate this will come to a city council meeting in February, so you'll get to see that agreement and see everything that we've outlined in that agreement and that they've agreed to do, and that will obviously, in turn, be good long-term for the community, for this project, for OTRS, whichever developer comes into, to develop the property, and we'll just kind of lay the foundation for the future in this area. I know that was a very long update, but if there's any questions, I'd like to take them at this time.
What a complex project.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for your detailed explanation and all your thoroughness and work with this project, and a lot of things that need to come together, and you're, you're doing it, pulling it all together. Are there any questions or comments from the council? I believe the mayor might have a comment.
Yeah, two things, first things, you've been the lead person on this for quite some time, you're doing a superb job of pulling together, what is it, the herding cats, pushing rope, the whole thing, it's, we recognize that this has not been easy, and you've done a great job. The NFR letter is to what level? Is that to a residential standard?
It is to residential standard, and it will exclude iron. We, we had discussed this at a previous city council meeting, that iron is something that is in the ground on the site, and we couldn't determine exactly where the iron came from, and it would take it an exorbitant amount of money, and we would probably have to dig up the entire site and remove all the soil on the site to get rid of the iron, and that wouldn't be even a guarantee. So our consultant said that, you know, going with the NFR and excluding iron is the best and most effective and efficient and cost-effective way to go for the city.
And it will give us variety as to what we can do with the property, it doesn't limit us in any way in terms of what we're allowed in terms of development.
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Couldn't the iron be seen as a naturally occurring element in the soil, and why, why does it have to be listed as a, I don't know if it's listed as an issue, but it just seems like there's...
They have minimum requirements for it. We do have iron in, I mean, at the, we have iron filtration at our wells. It's the migration into the, since we, since the site is close to the river, it's, it's the potential for migration into the river, and they, at certain levels, you know, they just have maximum levels for something like that. Not, we spoke with the DuPage River Salt Creek Work Group, who does actual studies along the river, and they didn't see in any of their analysis any high iron levels in the river that's of any type of concern to them either, so it's just, yeah, we're not exactly sure what's going on, on the site with the iron, but it's just, you know, it could just be our site here.
Okay, well, thank you again for your thoroughness in the report. There's no other comments? We'll go on to item number seven, which is to review and file TIF number three and number four, the Joint Review Board Meeting Presentations. Community and Economic Development Director Amy Emery is available to answer any questions if the council has any, and I don't see any council members, but the treasurer, Goodman, does have a question or a comment.
Yes, Director Emery.
I've the presentation in the packet, will there be minutes from that meeting?
Yes, we will have a meeting summary, I believe it's actually already posted on the project website. The minutes from the meeting of this year are included in the submittal that we provide to the state next year, so they are available, we can definitely, I get them to you, but they're transmitted in a couple of different ways.
Okay, thank you. And the next item is to review and file the commercial vacancy report. Are there any questions or comments regarding that report? Saying none, we'll move on to the next informational item, which is to review and file the bimonthly code enforcement activity report. And does anyone have any questions or comments regarding this? Okay, if not, we'll move on to our final agenda item for this evening, and that is the informational review and file, the Community Development Department Fiscal Year 2024 Work Program Update. Are there any questions or concerns regarding that? If not, we have one final motion, Alderman Lockett?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, who made the second? Oh, okay, Alderman Gustanovich, all right. Thank you, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you again for your attendance this evening and all the information that staff provided. Thank you.
This conference is no longer being recorded.